At least hit it now. And then I'll make sure though Nikki that before we sign off, let's do another recap of that because I do, I post these on my YouTube. Channel and people go back and revisit it all the time. So I want to make sure they have all of your information. So I just started recording the session ladies. If you have to leave early or something blanks out or something, you know, you know, the routine email admin at the lady CPA network and we'll send you the recording. Um, and again, make sure we get your information at the end on recording so that we can um, share that on YouTube and all of the social media. So before we get into actual running questions, ladies, do you have any general questions? I know someone um, who registered, let me see that was. I think Carmen it was someone registered and asked, uh, they said, yeah, Carmen says, how do you work through Sims and MCQs? So I guess we can just give a broad, you know, general overview of that. And then ladies, if you have any other general questions before we get into specific. Content and question answering, either drop them in the chat, or you can just let us know before we uh, go to the next phase.
Did you want me to take that one, Jawan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, so first starting with the Sims, uh, there's usually. Three or four things I tell people to do when they get a simulation. The first one is to read the last sentence first because that's usually where. The question is that you have to answer or whatever formula or number you need to calculate. So start there first because the examiners love to throw you distractors and give you all of this extra. All these extra sentences that have nothing to do with answering the question. So just to make sure. You don't get lost in the sauce on the question, read that last sentence first to say, what am I trying to figure out? From there, once you read the question, figure out, okay, what do I know? What are the facts that they're giving me already and what blanks do I need to fill in? And then from there, it's just a matter of you fill in the blanks in between what. Information is given to you versus what you need to answer the question. And then that's where you'll know. Whether or not you know this particular concept. If you can answer that question with no problem, then. Okay, you probably good. But if you're struggling with, uh, I don't know if it is or if it is not. Then you probably need to spend a little bit more time going through that particular topic. Um, as far as the Sims, I mean, there's, there's so many. Possible answers to that because you can get a research question, you can get a DRS, a document review question. Um, I mean, there's just so many different things. So my approach with the Sims is. They're more conceptual. If you understand a concept, it doesn't matter if they throw you a SIM. A multiple choice question or any other format, as long as you understand the concepts. And what's being asked, then it really doesn't matter the format. But the one thing I do tell candidates is. To spend a lot of time when you're studying, doing the practice simulations, because sometimes it's just. The presentation that overwhelms you. And even if you know a concept. That you've seen it because you've been studying, you might get the same concept in a different format and you like, oh, I don't know. When really you do, it's just more so the way that they're giving it to you because you can easily get. A simulation with six or seven different exhibits that you have to look at, figure out what you need from there. A- and create some journal injuries or create the bottom half of a financial statement. So. It's a matter of number one, understanding the concepts and number two. Getting the practice on the simulation so that you're not thrown off when you get. One of those super wordy three paragraph simulations and it freaks you out.
I think that's great advice. And I'll say too, my issue with simulations and why I struggle is timing. Like you have to make sure you don't spend too much time on the multiple choice questions. Because by the time you get to the simulations, you're gonna need that time. So I definitely like um. Nikki was saying, practice them and do a practice, a practice exam. Just to get your timing down because you want to make sure that you're getting through the multiple choice quick enough. So that you have efficient time for the simulations because it's the worst when you get to the last testlet with forty-five minutes. And you got ten documents and you're trying to click and you're flustered because you know the time is running out. So. Definitely those simulations, um, you need to. Use in every ounce of the time that you have available, um, trial, like you said, now I used to click through and I don't know if you did this Nikki and I had to get. I forgot to introduce Ty Lona, so I'm gonna have her introduce herself too. Um, I, when you get the test for the simulations, you can see all three at the bottom. I would click through to see if I had a research one in there and do that first. Get it out the way. Cause that's a quick one. And then see in what order I want to do them. So you don't have to just go to the first one, the second one and the third one. Click and see which one you think you can get through the quickest. And I would do the research one first. If it's something that I'm, I looked at and I'm like, oh, I know this one. Okay. So then I do that one first and then went to the third one last. So at least you're not flustered trying to do one that's super hard and you still have others to get through and then your, your brain is like frying.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. And that, that was one thing I did is. I would click through to say which, which concept do I know for certain that I can get? All of these points or most of them. And then the one that is kind of foreign to me, I will save that one for last. But even then. When that clock turns red because you down to like the last sixty seconds or something. I would just skim through the SIM one more time and just start plugging in some numbers because. You don't lose points for wrong answers. You only gain for the right answers. So never ever, ever leave anything blank. If you can get. One point on the simulation, that can be the difference between passing and failing. And really to back up to the beginning of the time management thing, you really have to take that same approach with the multiple choice questions. So, because it, 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 it's more like a domino effect. If you spend too much time on the, on the multiple choice questions. That's why you don't have enough time for the Sims. So I will go into a testlet. And I would just go through the questions. Okay, this one's easy. I know this. Let me do this one. If I don't know one, I'm gonna flag it like, okay, this is gonna take me some time. Or even if I know it and I know that it's one of those wordy questions that I'm gonna have to do some calculations. I would just flag it and say, let me get these quick points that I know, I know the answer to, and then I'll go back and spend some time. On those other ones. So as Jawan said, when you're doing the practice exams. Try not to spend more than like a minute or a minute and a half at the most on each multiple choice question because. You will find yourself like, okay, I know it's not this one and it's not this one. It's one of these two and you're staring at the screen for what can be two minutes trying to figure out which one is the right answer. But then you have to get to a point where it's like, you know what? Let me just pick one and move on because. I- it's impossible to know everything. That's why you can only get a ninety-nine on the exam. Um, but you have to know enough to be able to make educated guesses when you, what maybe you see a c- a question that's not familiar to you. So understanding those high level concepts, number one, managing your time, number two. And then number three is not being afraid of the formats and you, you get over that, that fear by doing the practice questions. Or getting the reps as I call it.
Yep. And then I want to introduce you ladies to Ty Lona Hill. So Ty Lona is actually one of our lady ambassadors and she mentors some of the ladies in the organization as well. So I do want her to introduce herself and give you guys some background on who she is, what she does and all that good stuff. And then um, we'll go into any general questions you have.
Thank you, Jawan. Yes, I'm Talana Hill and I am a licensed CPA in Florida, originally licensed in New York, which is where I started my accounting career. Over twenty years ago. And so um, with the exam, I can definitely help more, I would say on content versus test taking. When I took it, it was actually on paper, given twice a year. Um, so that's, you know, sort of dating me. So I am just so thrilled to be here. I do have. Over thirteen years of public accounting experience, about eleven of that was with PWC up in New York. And then I currently work at Disney in financial reporting. Supporting um, their cruise line Vacation Club Adventures by Disney and that Geo Expedition businesses. Um, lastly, I do have over ten years of tax prep and um, small business accounting experience as well.
So let me tell you ladies, at least you don't have a pen and paper and two times to get this thing right.
Right, exactly.
So I mean, with that said, man, like I, I couldn't even imagine. And you guys actually have it even better. Uh, more so than even Nikki and I did because now they're doing the rolling where as soon as you get your results, you can turn around and retest. That is the best thing ever because even do- doing it twice a year, I would have just wanted to kill myself and then doing it. Even waiting the quarter is because like if you, you, you didn't pass and you had to wait until the next, you know, quarter to be able to sit again. But then you're like, okay, do I move on and do I study for something else since I have to wait anyway? Or do I, you know, just start studying and wait until I can take that one again? And then you got that eighteen months ticket. And, and you're just trying to figure out, okay, I don't want to lose anything, but I can't take it again. So you ladies have to take advantage of this new system. And if you get a fail, I tell everybody, they know my philosophy. If you don't pass, you get one day to cry. After that one day of crying, start back studying again and let's go past this test because we don't have time to waste. Like the ti- the clock is ticking. And you don't want to do it like I did. And I think Nikki was the same way because we took it about the same time where. I had already been in the profession fifteen years and running my firm ten years. Before I even decided to become a CPA, because I was one of those people that were kind of like, oh, I'm doing good, you know, my firm is. Making good money. I don't need to be licensed. Like what's the point? And then I was like, you know, let me just stop and go take this test. And um. And I did, and I actually changed my opinion. And I tell everybody, I'm not afraid to say that I was absolutely wrong. Because even though I was doing really well before, I um, still doubled. My firm revenue when I became licensed. So just because you're doing well and you're able to, you know. Su- support your family and all of that, having that license speaks volumes. And I, I cannot say that you say it enough, like do it while you're can, especially if you aren't, you know, I, I did it at forty-something with. A twenty-year-old going down to uh, she was eighteen months when I started studying. She's four now. So when you don't have those type of responsibilities, it's so much easier. But if you do have those types of responsibilities, either way, we're here to support you to make sure you get it done.
Yeah, and I gotta say, Jawan, that mindset is part of what keeps a lot of us. Not credential because I was the same way. Like I'm third in command at this company. I got the big team. I'm making the money. I'm the controller, the director. Like, why do I even need the CPA? But. I just felt like when I got to the point where I wanted to chuck up the deuces to corporate America, open up my own shop, which again, that isn't even a requirement. To open your own shop because as Jawan mentioned, she was what, a decade into her firm before she even set. But. It adds a level of credibility to you as a professional, as a subject matter expert. And so. Even if you feel like your paycheck looks good now, your title looks good now, there's more and there's better. That's out there for you. So don't, don't get caught up in thinking that. You don't need it because your X number of years beyond your undergrad. The other thing. With the continuous testing, I think I got excited for, for a nanosecond like yay, but I'm like. Where was this at when I was studying? All the time and money I could have saved with continuous testing. And so like you said, definitely. Take advantage of that because when I first started my coaching program a couple of years ago, that was the biggest question. I just took BEC and should I wait for my score or should I start studying for the next section? And so I used to have. Advice that I would give on it, but now it's like, that's not even applicable. If you fail BEC, just take it again tomorrow because. You can take it within the same window. And that was my same philosophy. Have the biggest. The biggest, most melancholy pity party for yourself for twenty-four hours. And that's it. And after that, pick up and keep it moving. I think I quit. I think I quit studying one time for like forty-eight hours. I was like, this ain't for me. When I got the, another fail, like this is not for me. I'm not gonna keep torturing myself. I'm crying on my husband's shoulder. Like I'm just not gonna do this no more. I'm just gonna stay where I'm at and. The next day it felt weird, like I haven't picked up my book in two days. Like, I'm not about to cheat myself. Let me, let me get back on the wagon. So. If you fall off the wagon, if you, if you get frustrated, if you feel defeated, it is totally okay because. The CPA exam will take you on a roller coaster of emotions. But the feeling that you get. When you finally get credit for all four sections at the same time, it's nothing like it.
I have been laughing last week. I told him because my, my husband says I'm not emotional. So like when he proposed like six years ago. He gave me my engagement ring. He was like, I was like, oh, that's nice, honey. Thank you. He's like, when I passed the CPA exam, I was screaming, crying and shaking. And he was like, you didn't act like that when I proposed. And I'm like, man, please.
Like you gotta understand, it is a feeling. Like it is, it's, it's nothing like it. It's nothing like it. I was looking at the computer with my phone. Taking pictures like, let me get all of these scores.
Might change. I need to screenshot this. I need everybody to know what this thing said. And that's literally how I felt y'all. So and I don't want you ladies to become discouraged because it is a difficult test. Like it's, it's not easy by any means, like.
Considered the hardest professional exam.
Like I've had bar people who've taken the bar exam and, and our CPAs and they said the CPA exam is harder than the bar exam. I finished all credit hours towards my doctorate and I write my dissertation and that thing was harder. Harder than the doctoral program. Like it's just, it's so much information and it's so much to learn. But it is so well worth it, ladies, I'm telling you. So I mean, don't, don't think if you don't pass the first time. I, I tested twelve times. But you know, hey, my, my twelve times compared to somebody's four were both still CPAs. My seventy-five compared to somebody's ninety-eight, we're both CPAs. So. Don't even stress about that. You just get what you need to pass. So we're gonna go into, well, do we have any general questions first before we go into um. Direct questions and Nikki, let me make sure you can share your screen. Okay, so Nikki, I'm gonna let you share your screen. So ladies, as Nikki says, she is an AICPA um, content developer. So she has her own study program, her own questions. That she's developed as well as the ones that AICPA give out. And I told you ladies, just from working with Roger, I know that AICPA. Gives out general questions to all course providers and then you build upon that and develop more questions and more questions. So don't think that you have to go. Get three different study programs to prepare because the questions are gonna be the same. It's just how they work. And you, but the, the content and the message of all the questions are the same. Um, so Nikki, I'm gonna turn it over to you ladies. We're gonna do this collaboratively. So if she puts something up, we're gonna work them together. Don't think that you should know the answer right off. I'm, so we, look, we've given our disclaimers. I'm gonna work.
Right. Okay.
And she's pulling.
Oh, I'm, 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 I'm sitting here like, what is wrong? Okay, I, I wasn't. So I, I'm on this meeting on my iPad and everything is on my computer. I'm like, where is my stuff? Okay, it's, it's on my computer. Let me see how we can.
Yeah, you can hang up and call back in on the computer, whatever's easier.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna do that because.
Again, I'll admit you.
Okay, I'll be right back.
And then what were you about to say? Um, Ty Lona, I heard you saying something.
Yeah, I was just gonna share a test taking um, tip, especially since you're recording this and to the extent. Um, people have access to other things that are being recorded. So when I, when I passed it, I was. Living in Brooklyn, working in Manhattan and I, back in the day, had a cassette player and one of the people that I worked with actually had a set of tapes. From sessions like these that he gave me. And what I did was just listen. On my way into work, out of work, into work, out of work. And that was just. Having multiple ways of getting information into your head. So obviously doing the problems, but then also hearing that. Audio, you never know when one session may just touch upon, maybe something that wasn't resonating with you, but hearing that, you know. Boom, puts a little plant in your, in your head. So then if you just happen to get a question on that on the exam, boom, you got some assistance.
Yep. And I, that actually happened to me. I was on my way to test and I was using Ninja, I believe it was, audio notes. And I just put it in, put, put my aux cord in my phone, ran it on the way and had an exact question. And had I not heard what he said, I would have actually gotten it wrong. Because then I think that's when in, in audit and they have this new preparation that wasn't, you know, an actual report before, the preparation engagement or whatever. And it was new. And I listened to it and I heard it. And when I got into, man, I could have jumped for joy. I was like, I just heard that. I just listened to it. So definitely any way you can get it on a train, on the subway, in the car. Audio notes of YouTube videos, you know, whatever it is. And you'll be surprised what things in. When, even when you're not looking, but you're listening. So like I hear some people say they'll have a lecture up because you know, you, like most of us, I'm sure you work on dual monitors and multiple computers. So I would have a lecture running on one and working on the other. And you'd be surprised what you're catching. Even though you're working on something else and then you hear it and it sticks. So definitely like you utilize all resources. Head, headphones while you're at work. They don't know what you're listening to. Like whatever you can. Definitely. Did we get Nikki back yet? I don't think she popped in yet. I let somebody in, but I don't think that was her. So just those, those general um, details lady, again, making sure you're sticking to some type of study, um. Study uh, plan. So whether it's morning study time or evening study time, stick to that plan. I actually had a couple of ladies from our session on Thursday. That reached out to form a study group so that when we're not on these Monday and Thursday sessions, they're still keeping in contact and studying together because everyone's studying for far. So make sure if you're not a part of that group and you want to be, let me know and I can add you to their email and you guys can exchange information. Um, but they're doing that as well. I always think it is so much easier when you're studying um, together, even if you're not at the same time on a call together. But just know that you have someone going through exactly what you're going through at the exact time that you can bounce questions off of. You know, hey, I'm looking at this today. I have. No idea what this is. Can you take a look at this and tell me what you think? So definitely ladies, make sure you're talking to each other in between. Studying, hey girl, are you studying today? Um, you know, what's your study plan? Like holding each other accountable. Um, because if you do it on your own, you, you'll get lazy, you'll get frustrated, you'll get tired. But when somebody pings you and say, hey, well, we studying today. You're like, oh shoot, okay, let me go on the study. So you know, make sure you're doing that. Make sure you reach out and um. Hold each other accountable and there she goes. Hold each other accountable and check in, check in with each other because this is a hard journey. It's very difficult and it's not, you know, a lot of us, as we know. To, to, you know, kind of, you, you have these groups um, all over Facebook, of course, all the Facebook study groups and stuff to do, but to be able to reach out. You know, to uh, women in a circle that are doing the same thing you're doing, look the same way you look, come from the same places you come from and they understand. Man, that's like, that's like, you, you, it's no, it's nothing like it. Like it's just, it's easier to have someone who understands. The plight and, and what you're doing. Okay, so we have Nikki back.
Yep, I'm back. I heard you talking about those um. Facebook groups, which I kind of laugh about because it was um. It's like it never fails. There's always somebody in there like, should I be studying governmental or how much should I know about bonds? And it's like, come on now. Like first of all, y'all shouldn't even be disclosing what's on y'all exam because people will start responding like, well, I had one SIM on this and one SIM on this. And I'm like. Y'all not even supposed to be this, you know, disclosing what's on the exam, number one. But number two, if it's on the blueprint, you need to know it. That's, that's the bottom line.
And don't think because you took it once and failed that you gonna go back and study that same stuff because you will get a completely different test. You just have to know it.
Right. Okay, so um. So just to tell you a little bit about my course materials, because if you know, like just about any course provider has thousands of questions in a test bank. So I kind of broke mine up into sections like area one, area two, area three, area four. So. I don't want to just um, preach to y'all as far as like. Telling you about something that you don't want to know about. So as Jawan mentioned, if you have a specific. Topic that you're like, look, I just do not get um, bonds or I just do not get cash to accrue. Then we can talk about specific ones because I want this to be fruitful for y'all. Um, and that's the one thing I figured out when I started my program because I wanted it to be. For the candidates. Like I can talk about what I struggled with, but what I struggled with is not necessarily what somebody else would struggle with. And so just let me know where we need to meet y'all at and we'll meet y'all there. Uh, from a content perspective.
And if you're somewhere where you can't unmute yourself and let us know, just drop it into the chat. And two words, bonds. You know, like Lisa's like putting in something so we'll know. So she don't, you know, we don't have to just be pulling general information that you might, like she said, might not find helpful. Now, if we don't get anyone that has anything specific, then. We'll pull random and just walk you through, you know, like the question, the, the carry point, what is it asking, all of that. But I, we really would like something specific. That's gonna help you ladies.
Okay, can y'all see my screen?
Oh, you know what? I might have to redo your share since I put you back in again. Yeah, you said you should be able to share.
Okay. All right, let me know when y'all can see it. I'm just waiting for the uh, screen to stop spinning. Um, share screen. It, it's grayed out, Jawan. The share screen. Uh, wait, I guess if I go back into the meeting, let me turn off. See, this is when you try to do good with technology. I had my computer monitor, like my actual laptop monitor plus all my other monitors connected. So I think it kind of had me um. Not seeing all the screens. Okay, so let me know when y'all can see. Um, it should say far practice exam.
Uh, nothing yet.
Okay. Far practice exam.
When you hit share, do you see an option that says share desktop? Because mine does that too and I always have to choose desktop.
Oh, I think that's what it is. That's why I just unplugged my monitor so I didn't have all these extra um.
There we go. There we go. Now we can see it.
Okay, so this is a, I just took some exam questions and made it like a practice exam. And I, at first, when I put everything together to say, I'm gonna make all the questions about area one, area two, area three. That's the way that the traditional course providers do it. You spend several days on one topic. But then I said, I like to be able to throw random. Questions, you know, an area one question and then an area four question. So there are twenty-six. Questions here that we can talk about. It's the question, these are AICPA retired exam questions. Um, with the answers and the explanation. So again, I can walk through this whole thing, but I want it to be fruitful for y'all. So if there is something specific that you want to talk about, if you just want to talk about a couple, just let me know. Um, candidates, what's gonna work for y'all? Or Jawan, if you have a preference on how you want it to go. But I mean, I just want to make sure we, we capture. Every concern that every candidate has.
Definitely ladies, if you have a specific question or topic or area, you know, let her know what we'll do is um, just for the first one, Nikki.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, while y'all are thinking through. I just want to share this one question just to give y'all an idea of how it can be thrown at you. And also. If you feel like, uh, I, I've never seen this question before, so I don't even know how to answer it. There are some ways that you can get closer to the right answer, even when you have no idea what they're asking. So in this case, um. When I say read the last sentence first, this is one of those one-liners, looks super simple. If I saw this on my actual exam. This is an easy one that I would just try to answer real quick. So according to the FASB conceptual framework. The objectives of financial reporting for business enterprises are based on the need for conservatism, the needs of the users of the information. GAAP generally accepted accounting principles or reporting on management stewardship. So if you saw this and you like, I don't really know what this looks like, or I don't remember seeing this question. And when I was studying or doing my practice exams, I would just say. They're asking you about financial reporting and who is financial reporting for? It's external. And it's so that people can make decisions about the health of the company. Uh, from an investing, lending, from a regulatory standpoint. And so if you learn nothing else from F1 or that, or area one. Of the FAR exam, it's all about financial reporting, the framework and the importance of. The financial statements to be user friendly. Financial reporting i- is catered to the people who use the statements. So if you didn't know this answer. It, I would just go back to. It, I would just go back to who, who was financial reporting for. GAAP is, are the rules that you must comply with. When you do go through your process of financial reporting, compiling the financial statements. Reporting on management stewardship, kinda sorta, but that's not the underlying objective. And then financial reporting, accountants, we always err on the side of conservatism. So. That's just one of the ways, if you didn't know, just trying to talk through the answer choices that you have to see. If this is a possible answer, what would be my logic for this? The need for conservatism, we get that, but. That's not, that's not the strongest answer out of all these others. So. The users, financial reporting is there to give the users the information that they need. And one other thing I wanna say about this question in particular is that. The people who, or the users of the financial statements are not all accountants. So they don't understand a lot of the things that we as accounting professionals will understand. So when companies. Create and publish financial statements, they are written in the most basic and the most layman's terms, so that anybody. Can understand those statements. And one of the things that I tell candidates in my programs is. If you're struggling with a FAR topic, it's most likely contained somewhere in the company's financial reports. So if you think about your favorite publicly traded company, I was working with a candidate. And I asked her, what's your favorite publicly traded company? And she said Nike. And so I said, go look at their most recent ten K or their most recent financial reports. And see how they present this information. Look at how they present the leases and all of the disclosures about that. And how they're talking about the operating, investing and financial sections of the statement of cash flows. Because sometimes when you're studying and you're studying from a. A textbook perspective, you you have pages of books, you have videos. Sometimes it helps when you see it in a real situation to make it make more sense. And again, because the financial statements are written for a basic user, a basic non-accountant. You can go to a financial report and make sense of some of the things that you're studying. If you don't understand. Inventory methods, for example. A company has to explain what method they're using. Why they're, why they chose that particular method and how their statements might change if they switch from. LIFO to FIFO, for example. So use the everyday information that's available to you. As you work through these practice questions. Does that make sense? Any questions or comments about this question or really just the methodology?
I'm sorry lady, this is Jade and I'm driving. That makes a lot of sense. It's good just to be able to, you know, relate the financials to the study material. And I kinda, I'm doing that for like the governmental questions. I just looked up my kid's school district's. Uh information, so I can understand like the government-wise state. It it just makes it easier to study.
Right.
So I I do have a question in regards to like, if you can break down in the simplest form. Um diluted earnings for share, and it doesn't have to be tonight. For some reason, I I now at a roadblock and I don't remember what I learned. September for diluted earnings for share, like the convertible bonds. Uh like the equation, what's what to add back, what not to.
Okay, I, I don't think I have that in this exam module, but I'll make a note of that. And Jawan, um, I can send you a breakdown of it if you wanna, oh, I think she's still away. But um, dilu- diluted earnings calculations, I'll make a note of that and um. Provide some sample questions with some detailed explanations. And then I'll send it to Jawan and she can, she can share it with y'all.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that's, that's really, you, you really have to immerse yourself in this content beyond what's in the books. And that's why when I first started studying, I started um with Becker. Because the word was, if you wanna pass the CPA exam, you go with Becker. Like, they were like the default review course. And so I would leave work and go to the live courses and sit in the, the hotel ballroom. Um with these, these lecturers and really we were just going through books, highlighting things. You might need to know this, you might need to know that, make a mnemonic for this. And they were basically just walking you through. Highlights in the book, study this, do these practice questions. And I followed that. It, that um blueprint, for lack of a better term, for a while, and it got me um like. Seventy-five, seventy-six, you know, it kinda got me just over the hump. But then when I got so far into the exams where I'm having to retake because scores expired or because I failed. And all these other things, I felt like, okay, I was already pissed because I was retaking that exam that I passed. And the only reason I was retaking it was because of a time lapse. And I felt like, I've already proven I know this stuff. I don't know why I have to take it again. But, you know, my gripes are not gonna get me a license, so let me just buckle down and get this done. And so I felt like the ones that I kept failing, like something is not working here, like I have to switch up. Something in my study strategy. So that's when I started looking at financial statements. I started reading more. Like reading the Wall Street Journal, because those are everyday business transactions. That you will have to deal with. If a company acquires another company, what does that look like? When Jade talked about diluted EPS, or CNBC is talking about a company in the stock split and all these other things. There are so many real accounting scenarios happening every day, that when you see it in practice. It kinda makes more sense. And so when I felt like, there's something in these course materials that I'm not getting. I can't just keep. Highlighting my life away and trying to memorize these mnemonics, like I really wanna be able to. Number one, pass the exam, but number two, when I go to work or when I open up my own firm, I actually wanna know this stuff. Like, I'm not gonna be able to refer back to a mnemonic when my client is asking me a question about whether or not they should acquire a company. So when I got tired of retakes and failing and all these other things, it was like, I have to figure something out that. Is repeatable, something that I can maintain being, you know, a person that's third in command at work. I got two small kids at home, I got a house, I'm the CFO of my company, of my family's trucking business. There was so much going on. And I said, I don't have six hours to just highlight my life away. And then when I go do the multiple choice questions, I still don't get the answers right. So I had to find things that were, number one, going to be reflections of what I would actually have to deal with in a professional setting. And number two, things that would um get me excited or spark my interest. Because part of the reason why candidates are like, I don't feel like studying is because the material doesn't excite you. I mean, I think Jade can attest that diluted EPS does not sound exciting. But if I go watch CNBC and they talk about a company that's doing that, that's more fascinating to me. At least that's how I learn as a visual learner. And so find ways to make it real. Find ways to make it interesting to you and don't make it feel like it's a dread, like, ah, I have to go study. Because that's, when you have that wrong mindset, that kinda paints the picture of how your whole study session is gonna go. What other questions um do y'all have? I think there's one in the chat, okay. Um, what other questions or comments do y'all have? So here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna scroll through some of these questions. And if you see something that's like, look, let's talk about that one, then we'll do that. Or if it's one that I know candidates are like, I just don't get it, then we'll talk about those, because there's a lot of different topics in here. Um, this is a statement of cash flows question, which. I, I think we should talk about this one, because. One of the things that aside from testing you on like the direct versus indirect methods, they often, the examiners will often throw. A transaction at you and say that a company, in this case, they sold some equipment, like what would this look like? And so because it's equipment, a candidate might automatically think, oh yeah, that's, that's cash flows from. Investing, because it's a piece of equipment. But then when you start talking about gains and losses and all these other things, now you're drifting into. The operating piece of the cash flow statement. So it's important for you to be able to understand that even though. There's this one transaction, so let's just read it. In the statement of cash flows. If used equipment is sold at a loss, the amount shown as a cash inflow from investing activities. Equals the carrying amount of the equipment. And then you have to figure out how to account for the loss. And this is one of those questions where you might have studied statement of cash flows, you might understand the basics of it. But then when you get into something complex like this, where it's not just a company selling a piece of equipment. Because then that would just be cash inflow from investing, super easy, let's move on. But then when you start talking about the gain and the loss component, now it's beyond just. The statement of cash flows. Now you have to understand, well, what does this, what would this journal entry look like? Should I be adding or subtracting the loss? And so being able to understand the high-level concept. But then understanding situations like this, where now we have a loss involved and it's more than just. You know, the, the investment section, you really have to go through and, and make sense. So the answer, so in the statement of cash flows, if used equipment is sold at a loss. The amount shown as a cash inflow, which is the money you receive from the entity you sold it to. Is gonna be the, the carrying amount of the equipment minus the loss. Now, in my explanations, I try to refer candidates back also to the topic, the accounting topic that. That refers to this particular scenario, because that's another thing um. Is knowing where to get information from. And as we said before, it's, it's not possible for you to know every single thing. On the CPA exam, and there are CPAs who don't know every single thing. But we know how to research and how to go find information. So if you had a client that this was their scenario. And you're like, ah, I don't know off the top of my head, but let me pull up ASC topic two thirty. And see what they have to say about how this actually works. So I wanted the explanations to be not only just the, the answer. But helping you understand why the right answer is right and why the other three are wrong. Because there are so many other ways that this question can be posed. You can just change this piece to be. The company sold stock, or the company sold off an investment that they had in another company. So same concept, just a different type of scenario. Does that make sense? Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, so this sound like y'all got this. So if y'all got a question on statement of cash flows, y'all gonna answer it the right way. Same with um, uh, financial reporting.
Yeah, and just speaking about different ways to answer, so like, I think if I got that question, for me. What would help is actually putting numbers. To fiction, so I would, I probably would have been the margin, like, okay, investing, operating, okay. Loss, carrying value, right, because the inflow actually leads to your point. Are the proceeds received or the amount, you know, that was collected? And then you have the other pieces of breaking it down, um perhaps as the actual uh. Um formula or calculation is just another way.
Yeah, absolutely Talana. And the other thing, like you hear people say numbers don't lie. My thing is journal entries don't lie. And if I got this question, I would have wrote this out as a journal entry to say, okay. The company sold the equipment, so I have to debit the equipment on the journal entry. They got cash in the door, so I have to debit the cash to increase it. So what do I need to do to make this journal entry balance? And that'll kinda the plug, which is a number accountants don't like to use, but in this case is applicable. Whatever number you have to plug in to the entry is gonna be your loss. And so. I, that's another thing. If you get a question like this, you kinda don't understand what's going on. Either write out the journal entries or break out some T accounts, because they're gonna help walk you through the flow of the transaction. And those things that don't make sense to you will kinda make more sense. Where again, even if you don't know the right answer, at least by doing that, you're getting yourself closer to the right answer. Um, oh Jawan, I, um Jade had a question about diluted EPS. So I told her I'd worked through, I'd find one of my questions. I don't think there's one in, in this um exam bank. But I'll work on finding it and I'll send it to you for you to share, share with her in, in the group.
Okay.
Um, let's see, this is. Kind of an inventory question. Um. But it's more so the valuation of the inventory. So while you were away, Jawan, um. I walked through a couple of questions and my approach was. I don't wanna just regurgitate something, because somebody might say, look, I got inventory in the bag. I don't wanna talk about inventory. So. I wanna just scroll through and talk through some of the ones I know that candidates struggle with the most. But if there's something that we need to pause and just go into a deep conversation about, then we um, we can absolutely do that. This one is um.
The um ladies sent in, and I don't know if she's on this call, but I saw a message on our forum about um. Of course, cash to accrue, because they always have that question, and then uh bonds.
Oh, the two things that I ha- I've already done tutorials on. So um. I have a cash to accrue tutorial in the virtual classroom. There's also um. I did a bond simulation. I used to have access to Wiley's materials and so. I use one of their simulations and work through the whole thing. It's probably. A forty-five minute sim, but it's going through the journal entries, the amortization schedule. Um, the discount, the premiums, plus all the qualitative information where. People are usually like, well, how do I know? Do I use the stated rate versus the market rate? Or how do I know if it's a premium versus a discount? So before you even get into the numbers and the math, just by following the fact pattern to know what, what that's gonna look like. And so I was that person that's studying for FAR, like, I hope I get a bond simulation. Because I was, I did securitization for five years, and so that's nothing but issuing bonds that companies take the money. Raise the funds to run the business. And so I'm like, oh, we're, we're issuing new debt. I get to do a new AMR schedule, like, okay, let's go. So I was hoping for a bond simulation. That's one of my favorite things to do, just because, again. Because I've seen it in practice and I did it every day for five years, issuing bonds at discounts, premiums, the rates.
The same time, but when I tell you it that, it just did not make sense to me at all. Like, I struggled, I, I think I ended up using um, I don't know if it was Darius or Professor Farhat on YouTube. But one of them I ended up watching and it finally made sense, because I would lose it on the face value. And then the discount and then, and I'm like, okay, now wait, now what?
Yeah, got the whole um forty-plus minute simulation on bonds.
To Nikki website, because she does have, like you said, tutorials and stuff out there. Um that you can use and a membership plan, and we'll go through all of that again before we get off of this call, because I want her to. Go through. And let me tell you something also, ladies, don't think, it's, it's not impossible. But it's, I'll say highly unlikely, that you can only use your study thing and not supplement in some area. Because some things you just gonna need more explanation on, like some things you just gonna need to hear somebody else explain it. And the way I always say about like, and I can only use surgeon, and I think I may have looked at some of Roger videos. But some people are lecturers and some people are teachers. There is a difference between a lecturer and a teacher. So a lecture, you know, surgeon does lectures and they're only fifteen minutes, so they make them short and so they won't lose your attention. But it's just a lecture. It's just a PowerPoint that they're talking through. It's not really teaching you, because it's not going in-depth enough for you to really understand. Some, sometimes you need. Some, sometimes you need a teacher. So some of the instructors like Nikki and Professor Farhat on YouTube, they are and teachers. So they will break it down and teach it. And that is a world of difference with, you know, listening to, you know, fifteen minute lecture that you you might find built into your study material. So sometimes you have to supplement and go and find other resources that'll really break it down and explain it to you. So don't just try to rely on whatever you're using. If you're struggling with something, go find somebody else that can explain it to you or find some material that'll go in depth to really teach you the information.
Right. And and that's my approach. Like, if a candidate asks me a question, I answer their question with a question, with a retired CPA exam question to say, I can talk to you about it all day long. But if you tell me like, like Jade mentioned, I'm struggling with diluted EPS. Okay, I'm gonna go find my diluted EPS questions and you'll have all the explanations. But then it's like, let me save you from having to read thirty pages about EPS and show you, number one, a potential question that can be thrown at you on the exam. Number two, how to answer this question. And number three, write down three or four bullet points as takeaways for this particular topic, so that if you don't understand diluted EPS, once you walk through this question and you understand the answer, now you can say, okay, diluted EPS is bullet point number one, bullet point number two, bullet point number three. So if I get another question about it, I have a better grasp of the material, because I've walked through it, because I have notes and it didn't take me forty pages and three middle-aged instructors' videos to try to figure it out. And and no disrespect to the course providers at all, because I purchased some or all of every single one of them. I purchased all of Becker. I actually won Wiley in a contest. Um, I don't know if they still do this, but they used to send out um, pop quizzes every Friday of like three exam questions. And if you got all the answers right, they would enter you into this drawing to win a free course. And I answered those questions one time all correctly and got the free course. And so I had the self-study and I said, no, I need to upgrade this. So I upgraded what they gave me. Um, but I still went to Barnes and Noble, bought all the CPA exam books. Um, one of them I still have right here. This book is the bomb. I don't know if they still um have this or publish this, but and I'm not being paid for this. This is just, this was super valuable for me. So like Jawan said, you don't have to rely on just your course materials, because I got this book when my Becker expired. And it's like, we're not gonna extend you, but you can pay for it again. Was not gonna do that. Um, I was studying for Wiley and I felt like, okay, Wiley was good for this section and this section, but I need more help. So I went and got this book. And then I went and bought part of um surgeon. And then uh, I bought a part of something else. I can't even think of the guy's name, but the the course provider actually called me. I cannot think of his name. Um, so yeah, you have to do what works for you. And when I created my classroom, it was really the culmination of everything that worked for me and then everything that candidates tell me that they need. I need to figure out how to study while I'm working full-time, or my exam is in two weeks and my anxiety is getting to me. Or um, you know, just it, just about any question that a candidate has asked me, I probably have a tutorial on it in the classroom. So it is a good way to supplement all of the technical materials that we get from the traditional course providers, because there's a lot of non-technical stuff. Um, which is probably, that's probably what candidates have the most questions on, is the non-technical stuff. How do I study? How did you do this with two kids at home? Because I got two kids and I don't know how to make this work. Should I tell my boss that I'm studying? Um, how do you pick yourself up after you fail? I've taken this exam three times and I don't know what to do. So just about any question that I had, any question that students in my coaching programs have, I know that there's always somebody else who has that same concern. And so I said, let me just make sure that I can cover all the possible concerns that that candidates will have. So if you have a question, more than likely, there's a tutorial or a um, a video about it. Um, okay, so I guess we can go back to the questions. We kind of, that was a good little break for a dialogue, I think. Um, so this one, I guess this one I want to talk about real quick, just because ASC eight forty-two is coming, the new lease accounting standard. Well, it's here, it's not coming, it has arrived. And a lot of companies are in the implementation phase. And this is one of those rules where you have to think about, I think I know the answer, but should I use fifteen or twenty? And so with this question, the walkaway cost should be. So we're trying to figure out how the cost should be accounted for in the financials. So unless he incurred costs to construct walkways to improve leased property, the estimated useful life of the walkways is fifteen years and the remaining term of the non-renewable lease is twenty years. The walkaway cost should be. So actually, before I answer this, I want to throw this to y'all and and y'all give us some answers, so we can see, we can test your uh, FAR readiness. So y'all either put in the chat or unmute and tell us what you think the answer is. A, B, C, or D? How these costs should be accounted for in the financials. So you have one answer choice telling you it's it's expense that's incurred, it goes right to the P and L. But then you have three other answer choices telling you that these get capitalized to the balance sheet. And then you just have to figure out the time period.
So ladies, what do you want to get rid of? I always say, let's get rid of two first. So what are we getting rid of?
A and B. So it's up here.
Yeah.
Get rid of A. A and B, okay. Is that a consensus? Does anybody disagree? So now you've gotten yourself fifty percent closer to the right answer by eliminating two answers. So we're either capitalizing as leasehold improvements and depreciating over fifteen years or over twenty years. So if this, if this was your exam and you got this question and you said, I know for a fact it's not A, I know for a fact it's not B, it's C or D. How do you, how do you make the decision? And remember, the clock is ticking and you've already been looking at this question for forty-five seconds. So you gotta, you gotta pick one and move on.
Julia says she thinks maybe C. She put that in the chat.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's non-renewable.
Any more answers? Okay, we say it's C. That is correct.
And I like Jade, Jade pointed out the fact, and those are the things you have to look at for like, just key words that stand out, that non-renewable stood out for Jade. So she mentioned, okay, non-renewable. And you, you know, looking at the estimated useful life. So look at the key terms that you you've heard of or you've seen while studying. And you know, I I was a pen and I'm a pen and paper type person. So like, I probably print this thing out and be highlighting and underlining and stuff and.
Same here. Same here. So for those of you who were having to decide between C and D, tell us your rationale. How did you decide fifteen versus twenty years? Um, who put that in the chat? Julia? How did you come up with C? Oh, I'm calling y'all out. We not gonna be shy today. Now, y'all are paying money to get these NTSs. You go, you've paid money for review courses and you're gonna pay for when you get your license. And we are here to support you along the way. So don't, don't, don't be shy now.
Um, I went with fifteen years because I was going off the useful life and not the non-renewable term.
Yes, that's exactly it. That's exactly it. It's usually the lesser of the two, the lesser of the life or of the um, the lease term. So.
Right, because you're managing it with the usage.
Yep. Yep. And and that's what a lot of people confuse. You'll see a lot of questions like that where they'll give you something similar, like this could have been a company leases a printer or a piece of equipment. And the equipment has a useful life of eight years, but the lease term is ten years. And you're trying to figure out which one is the best one. So it's it's most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's um, the lesser of the two, either the life of the lease or the life of the equipment. Um, Jawan, how we doing on time?
We have about twenty minutes. I'm looking, um.
Okay.
Yep, twenty minutes.
Um, y'all want to talk about bad debt and AR?
Yes, you know what? Do, do you have one on the direct? Oh, I just got back to my screen, see what you were doing, because I do get questions all the time about the um, what is the direct method and the something else method, the two differences of of writing so on.
Oh, the um direct and the allowance method. I think most, most companies use the, in practice, the allowances is most commonly used. So this one looks, it looks easy. It looks pretty simple. So let's walk through this. And when the allowance method of recognizing bad debt expense is used, the entry to recognize that expense. So a company is in its first year of operations and has never written off any accounts receivable as uncollectible. When the allowance method of recognizing bad debt expense is used, the entry to recognize that expense is what? What does it do to the financials? This is one of those questions where you would have to start creating a journal entry or breaking out the T accounts to say if a company has ten thousand dollars in AR and they write off a thousand dollars of it, what does that journal entry look like? And what would it do to the net income? And to the assets on the balance sheet. So I want to give y'all about sixty seconds to figure this out. And then if y'all could either unmute or put in the chat what your answers are, we'll talk through it to make sure y'all understand the rationale and start to see a recurring theme of how to answer these questions. So take about sixty seconds. Talk yourselves through it, make your T accounts, your journal entries, and then we'll talk about it.
Nikki, what section is the earnings per share in in FAR? I'm looking at my surgeon. I was gonna try to pull an EPS question.
I think it's F three, let me see. Let me see. Um, or I keep saying F, because area, I think it's area three, the one with um.
Select transactions?
Select transactions. Yeah, that's either two or three. Because one is, is the accounts and then one is the transactions. Okay, so that's been, that's been about a minute. So what, what will happen to net income or current assets? When a company has to record the bad debt expense? Who wants to take a, a guess, an educated guess?
So let me read Jade's, because I think she's still at work, so she might not be able to speak. So in the chat, she put um, B with a question mark. And she said debit bad debt expense credit allowance with a question mark. So what do we think, ladies? Carmen is saying D. So in the chat, Carmen is saying D, Jade is saying B, to debit uh, bad debt expense and credit allowance.
Okay. Anybody else? Dion, you wanna, you wanna take a guess? Um, so let's, let's, let's talk about it. We'll talk about it. And it's okay if y'all get the answers wrong. That's what we here for, to talk y'all through it. So don't feel bad or like, oh, I don't know, just because you get the answer wrong. The answer is D. It decreases current assets. So before we even jump into the explanation, I want to go back to um Jade's response, just to kind of give, give you a pointer on this question. So you said that the answer was B, that it has no effect on net income. But if you are debiting bad debt expense, that means that you're increasing the expense and you're lowering, you're decreasing the net income. So make sure that again, you understand why the right answer is right and why the other ones are wrong. Because if it has no effect on the net income, what that's saying is, okay, this only impacts the balance sheet. This is only doing something like reducing the receivables account, but it's not really doing anything to the expense. So so don't be, don't get caught up with, with that, with thinking that, okay, it doesn't have a, an effect on the net income. But when you write out the entry and if you're saying it debits the expense, then that is actually impacting the income. So the answer is D and I, um, again, I like.
The crazy thing is Jade, your, your journal entry was right. It's just that your answer was wrong.
Right. Right.
Right. And and the way that they're sort of trying to, I don't know, they're making it a trick question or or you have to pay attention to the details. It states that they hadn't written off anything right to date. So to the extent it was a situation where they had put a provision on the books and now they're just removing the receivable and the allowance, then there would not have been an effect on net income.
Right.
And that's, that's why they'll trick you too. So remember that exactly what Talana was saying is that the actual write-off, because people get confused with the allowance method. So when it is time to write off something that's uncollectible, because you're using the allowance method, you've already impacted the income statement. So when you do get to the write-off part, don't, don't get those two confused, because you won't hit the income statement again. That's what the allowance is for.
Right. And and another thing, because I um I've seen this in practice. This is not, like, even though you're getting this question, this is not what this is gonna look like in practice. In practice, you're probably gonna have a, a recovery or charge-off department running a query on customer balances to see how old they are. And if they're more than a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and fifty days, they'll take that whole file, send it to accounting and say, hey, guys, here's the list of bad debt that we need to write off. And then it's up to the accountants to figure out what does this look like and how do we book this entry based on what they gave us? So that's why I say any opportunity you have to make this stuff real, something that you'll actually see in practice, take advantage of those. And those of you who are working, you're studying and you're working, think about your day-to-day job responsibilities that are reflective of FAR content. If you, if you work in general accounting, for example, um, you should have a pretty good grasp of journal entries, of T accounts. A lot of the work that you're doing is probably testable content. So look for the things within your work that can help you pass the exam.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. I don't know how many people here, right, are already working in accounting. But something that I tell um my team members is that usually if you're making some type of entry, there is guidance to support it. So we aren't just making entries. It can go back to your first question about the actual um, accounting concepts. Um, or specific, you know, like you said, ASC two thirty or ASC eight forty-two or six oh six, there's going to be some accounting basis for pretty much everything that you're doing. If you're making some kind of journal, you're writing something off, capitalizing something, there is guidance and then that guidance is what's being tested.
Yep.
And if you can make it applicable to what you do every day, you'll learn it and it'll stick. So like, if you can figure out how to incorporate that, or or maybe you already do it and you, you know, make it into almost like a case study of something that you do every day, then you won't forget it. Like Nikki was saying with the bonds, she was doing it every day. So if you can relate it to what you're doing and practicing. So if you can relate it to what you're doing and practice it at work and, um, and I, oh, I hate, now let me tell y'all about me and journal entries. And that's cuz I come from the corporate world. And in corporate, you had to have a description. And every word, the first word of your entry had to be a descriptive word. You're reclassing, you're writing off, you're true up, whatever it is. If you stick that in your mind, you'll know exactly what you're doing and then you'll know like Talana was saying, the concept behind it. Like what, what are you doing? And that, that makes it a lot easier too.
Yep, and me being the accounting leader that was overseeing a lot of that, if you sent me a journal entry to approve without that verb as the first word, it was coming back. If you sent it to me and there's no documentation, what, what work papers do you have to substantiate what you're doing? Not only from a controls perspective to know that we actually can substantiate what we're putting in our records, but also it helps the accountants to know that they know what they're doing. Because you're, you're not just booking this because somebody told you to or you not really have a basis for doing it. But having that documentation and making sure that the journal entry, the description reflects what you're actually doing is important. And that's another thing that helps what you're learning. Because again, you can easily get a simulation where even with the bonds, they can, they can throw a bond simulation at you so many ways. Like just asking you qualitative questions. Like here is a bond. Is this bond issued at a premium or a discount? Like without you even having to calculate a number, they can ask you that. They can ask you to create the amortization schedule to talk about the interest payment, the interest expense, the amortization of any bond or discount. Then they can ask you, well, if the interest expense for this six months is this much, how much is the cash? Or making sure you understand that the interest payment and the interest expense are different. Unless the bond is issued at par, that's the only time they're gonna be the same. So a- again, I, I love bonds. I'm glad I can talk about them in past tense now, thank God.
You know, I'm over here laughing cuz Jade put into, Jade put into the chat, oh wow, I thought, I thought it was just my boss being picky about the verb. It's just like, I didn't learn that verb necessity in college. I'll cut it some slack.
That is totally okay. That is totally okay.
Yeah, so your boss is not being picky cuz, and you know, a- a- and as an accountant that might come in behind you as an auditor and I'm looking at a journal injury with no description or no, like, I don't know what you were doing. So then I gotta come back and ask for information. Okay, but what was this entry for? Like if you're descriptive in it, then I don't have to go try to figure out what were you doing? What, where did you move it to? Like what are you doing? So that's, that's why the pickiness Jade, cuz it, it just makes it so much easier. And then like Nikki said, as a, a manager that's approving the journal injuries, you don't have to go back and ask a million questions if you already descriptive in what you were doing. And then as an auditor coming behind you, I already know that, okay, this is what this was for. Now I know, you know, what I'm looking for for backup, so.
Right, and see, as, as the manager, I'm thinking about two things. Number one, does my accountant know what they're doing? Do they really understand what this entry is doing? And then number two, I'm thinking about Jawan. When the auditor comes, I don't wanna have to pay for us to go figure this out. Because if Jawan pulls this entry and it doesn't have the support or it doesn't make sense, she's gonna say, hey, can you help us understand this? So now my team is gonna have to backtrack and do work that we should have did when we initially booked the entry. In the meantime, Jawan is just sitting in the conference room chilling, billing us while we go back and fix our mistake.
And, and now wondering what else am I gonna care? Like, is, are there any other mistakes?
Here in the land of potential deficiencies, and that's why they're testing, why we have to test for audit, right? Because the point of the journal injury is the re-performance standard and being able to follow and understand what you're doing within your organization.
Yeah, and Julia just said the same thing from an auditor, please properly label your journal injuries. So yeah, it, it saves us time, it saves us money, it saves us headaches just by following those rules. And then it helps you as an accountant learn conceptually and not just, I know every single month because I do this entry, I need to debit this and credit this, but you understand the mechanics. Do you understand conceptually why you need to debit this and credit this every month?
Yeah, so ladies, we only have about five minutes and I really want Nikki to pull her website back up. Share your screen, Nikki, with your website so you can show them.
Okay.
So look at the different options that she has, ladies. Some free tutorials, some membership, well worth it, believe me you, um, to go through and see what you may be able to use from, um, what she already has. Like why reinvent the wheel? Go out there and find the tutorial and, and, and listen to it. So go ahead and pull that up and let the ladies know how to navigate the website, what you have to offer um, and definitely contact information.
Okay, can y'all see my, uh?
We see the screen, but it's the, it's the, um, content that we were just reviewing.
Okay, I think I did the, um, okay, so I stopped sharing. All right. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so again, as I said, this virtual classroom is just basically like studying for the CPA exam online. I took everything that worked for me, all the study strategies that helped me pass. Um, I had gotten to a point where I think I had taken ten exams and I had only had credit for one at that point. So I had lost all of my other credits. I was hanging on to FAR or hanging on to RED by a thread, y'all, by a thread. So I had got to this situation where I had, I had RED, I had audit. I took BEC, I had to wait and see if I passed, but then I had to get the FAR back. And so I said, I don't wanna wait until the next testing window. Again, thank goodness for continuous testing, but I don't wanna wait until the next testing window to take FAR. Because if I can take FAR right now, then I can be done right now. Cuz I was ten exams in, I was tired. I just wanted my license. So I took BEC one day and then I went and took FAR the next day. Hadn't studied, hadn't looked at the content in over a year. And I was just like, let me roll the dice and see if I can just like wing FAR and pass it, and pass it. So the scenario was I'm waiting for my BEC and if I pass BEC and I pass FAR, I'm done. But if I fail BEC, I'm gonna fail BEC and lose my audit and I'm still gonna have to retake FAR anyway. So I rolled the dice, took FAR the following day without studying. I got a fifty-nine. And I was, I was beat up. Like I don't, I knew I hadn't studied. I, I, I don't know why I'm so shocked that I didn't pass. But there were people like, girl, I know people who study for FAR for months and can't even get a fifty-nine. And I'm like, I'm not proud of a fifty-nine. So I had to start over with this RED credit. Like I have to get these three other scores back and I gotta do it within six months because I'm not gonna keep torturing myself. So that's when I switched up all of my study strategies and I took everything that worked for me, put it into this classroom and it's designed to be a place for you to say, look, I got my course materials, but I need more help. And I'm studying, but I'm not learning anything. Or I'm working full-time, how do I talk to my boss about this? Cuz that can be a delicate situation. Um, cuz some bosses will support you and even sponsor you. Some bosses will say, look, I don't care about what you got going on outside of work. I need you to get this work done. So that can be, you know, kind of a, a fragile conversation to have. Um, a lot of the questions that candidates have asked me over the years, I just took the questions and made them into a tutorial. So there's, um, so this is where you can join with a membership. The way the membership works is, it's a monthly plan where you can either get access to just all of the content, all of the tutorials, all the courses, all the practice exams. There's also a membership, um, that's the basic membership. The VIP membership is all of the, the courses, the practice exams, everything in there. Plus you get, um, invited to the monthly coaching calls, which is a group coaching session with all of the candidates. It's just to check in, see how everybody's doing, keep everybody accountable, have some pep talks. But then it's also candidates are building their networks because you're talking to and connecting with candidates who are in other parts of the world, who are studying and on this struggle bus with you. And then there's also a coaching membership where you get a fifty-minute private coaching session with me every single month on top of the group, um, call as well as access to all of the content. Um, so Jawan, I did send you the link, uh, for anybody who's interested where they can get a discount off of their membership. But these are just some things that people have said about my course. I did a FAR, I did a live FAR workshop last Monday where we actually, um, dug into some questions, kinda like how we did here and then just talked to some candidates about some last-minute exam tips. There's some Q and A in case you're wondering what's in the content library, how do I sign up? Do, how, how long do I have to commit? There is no commitment. You, you come and go as you please. But of course, I want you to stay until you pass the exam. Um, there's also, here's the, the bond tutorial, which is free. So you can watch this today if you want to. Um, cash to accrue is free. And I, I, I struggled with this one because I used to charge for this tutorial. But then I said, this is such a struggle for people. I'm not gonna yank somebody's wallet for this. Like y'all could just go ahead and have it. So there's also finding time to study when you're too busy. Stress and anxiety, audit practice exam, which is I'm working on now, um, as well as RED. But there's a lot of FAR content, a lot of BEC content, um, and these courses that you see. So like stress and anxiety, um. Oh, thank you. Finding time to study. When you purchase a membership, all of this stuff is free. These prices are for people who are like, I don't want a membership. I just wanna watch this video about how to study for the exam. So once you join, um, here, if you click learn more, then it lays out for you what each, what each, um, program is. So this is the VIP FAR that I talked about, where this is everything in the content library plus the group coaching sessions. Um, I, I'm, I'm still talking. I'm still talking. This is one of the perils of working from home. The kids don't care. No, you cannot have it. No, you cannot have it. Um, like, can he have my food? No, you cannot have my food. So just a lot of workshops, practice questions, the coaching sessions. Jawan has the link to, um, for you all to get a special price on your memberships. But you can, again, go and watch the FAR tutorials right now cuz those are free. You don't have to pay to watch those. But if you want to have the extra accountability, join us every month for the group session. Or if you wanna have a private session, then you can purchase a membership for those.
Yeah, just, um, send me an, uh, email, ladies, admin, send it to my admin at, uh, lettycpa network dot com and I'll send you the link to you to make sure you get your discount.
Yep.
Well, I believe ladies, we have had another wonderful session. And I, I keep, everyone, I'm gonna keep you posted cuz we had some people last Thursday asking about a Saturday morning session. Cuz you know, as mothers, we like to just get up early Saturday morning while the kids sleep and try to get some study time in. I mean, I'm gonna have to get out the bed though, right? So if I get out the bed, I'm gonna need all y'all out the bed. So I want to make sure that you are committed. And if I put this registration link out for Saturday morning, then I expect you ladies to register. Cuz if I got to roll out the bed, I need you to roll out the bed too. So just kinda keep, keep an eye out on either your email or one of our email marketing campaigns or social media or something. But I'll make the decision, um, by Thursday or so. If we're gonna do one Saturday morning session to get a filler on the turnout, um, I, I'm a morning person. You know, my husband don't know what sleeping mean anyway. So even if it's a Saturday and you're trying to get to that nine o'clock sleep time, at six thirty, seven o'clock, he just up and think the whole world's supposed to be up with him. So.
That's a lot. My husband's the same way. I'm trying to work on being, uh, I don't even wanna say a semi-morning person. I just don't like mornings. Like I can stay up easily till like two or three in the morning. And it just feels like it's like four o'clock in the afternoon. Like sometimes when I go to bed, sometimes when I go to bed, it's like when my kids are getting up, getting ready for school. I'm just, I can get so much done at night. In the morning, don't talk to me.
Oh yes, if you've been up all night long.
Don't talk to me before eleven at all.
No, not at all. My brain and my body shuts down about nine to the clock. So I am usually up, up in the morning. But I, I do kinda wish I could sleep in on some weekends, but that just don't happen. So with that said, ladies, more than likely, we will have a Saturday, this Saturday session. Um, if we do, it'll be like a seven AM, eight AM session, just an hour and a half or so before everybody gets up and gets started with your day. So that way you can run some questions live. Now Jade, I think you on the west coast, if I remember. I know you, I know it's a time difference, but you're just usually still at work and stuff when we're on. So girl, I don't know what to tell you cuz that's.
I'm an hour behind.
Oh, you're an hour, okay.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not bad. So even if we did seven AM, that'll be six for you. You young, you can get up that time of morning. All right, ladies. Well, thank you for joining the call. Talana, thank you.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
You're welcome, anytime.
Probably see a lot of you guys on Thursday for our next session. All right, you have a good evening. Oh, anyone wants the recording of the session? You know, just shoot an email to the admin. Once it, uh, downloads online, we will send you the link and it will be on our YouTube channel. Nikki, I'll be tagging you cuz a lot of people just, they put in those tag lines and they'll look it up and you'll have people from everywhere contacting you.
It happens all the time. It happens all the time on LinkedIn. It's, it's all right. It's overwhelming, but I know people need help. But I don't, this is something I love doing. If I could just not do nothing else and just do this, I would do this.
It's coming. It'll, it'll.
You just have to make your pathway, but you can do it if that's.
It is coming. It'll definitely be there. So we'll continue to spread the word about you. And, and by this time next year, I'm just gonna say it, that you'll be full-time in your coaching business and support your entire salary.
Yep, and see, I'm gonna be like, remember Jawan, when you said that?
Yep.
We, we gonna coin this day.
Yep, remember where we at. November sixteenth is recorded. It'll be on YouTube, so we'll have documented proof. All right. All right, ladies, you have a good evening and I will see most of you on Thursday for the next session. Thank you, ladies.
Bye.